So, welcome back to this self-inquiry study session. I'm gonna open it up for questions now. Questions about this particular subject, please, about the exercises we've done today. So we'll go to Yogi Raj, first of all, when you're ready.
Yeah, hello, Ellen.
Hi.
Can you hear me?
I can, yeah.
Well, thank you for the list of these three questions. And the doubt that I have is, the first question passed by just fine, and so did the second. Now, when I came to the third, then I realised that I think I was going about it all wrong, even with the first question. But I was thinking to myself, how am I recognising the consciousness? That is when I realised that right from the word "go", right from question number one, I was trying to imagine a mental projection of myself, that is, again and again, using the mind and the senses, to imagine the shape of my body sitting, and then trying to get into the body, past the layers, and to finally visualise this white light, which probably is my way of imagining the consciousness. So, this, I think, is a barrier, because I'm trying to anticipate the way ahead, instead of trying to just ask a question and let it come by.
It doesn't need to be a barrier. In fact, it can be a huge breakthrough, because we're actually seeing, wow, I've been doing it this way. We're becoming conscious of the fact that I've been trying to imagine something, right? So, when you see that, then you can, okay, what if I just ask these questions, right? And we can do it together now, if you want. Let's just ask this question, can I find a person? And just see what happens. If you make no attempt at all to find an answer, just asking this question, you might feel something different inside, something lighter or more open, something not efforting. Can you feel something different inside? Just asking the question. What happens when you just ask the question?
Okay. So I think I need to put in efforts not to make it a point to zero in on an answer.
Or just allowing all of the answers that come, right? If we ask this question, can I find a person? How am I recognising consciousness? A lot of answers are gonna come, some from the mind, and maybe this imagination is just another type of answer. It's okay. Maybe there's a feeling in the body, another type of answer. But just the willingness to ask this question is doing the work here. So just as if I was asking a question, or as if you walked into a restaurant and you were ordering something from the menu, and the waiter takes your order and goes off into the kitchen to give it to the chef. How am I recognising consciousness? That's kind of my work done. I've put my order in, and now I'm just gonna see what happens with that question. It's kind of a letting go of trying to make something happen, isn't it? Just asking. Perhaps we're shifting over to valuing the question more than needing anything to happen from the question.
Okay. Do I have space for another question, or should I wait five minutes to finish?
No, it's okay. If you have another question, we can go.
Now, the scriptures that I have endeavoured to study. Now, okay, my question is coming through a few thoughts which you shared, and you said that don't wait for a big moment. Unfortunately, I think I have read enough material that has conditioned me to believe that there is one big moment of enlightenment. So have these, have some scriptures and materials probably romanticised the idea of enlightenment in order to keep us on the track?
I think for some beings, they have had this big moment, where they've had this recognition. But whether that happens or not, whether it's a sudden thing or a gradual thing, this questioning has to happen in a sustained way anyway. The questioning is the habit that we need to form. And even for those beings who have had a big shift, like Ramana had this big seeing at sixteen, still, he had to integrate this afterwards, that took him three years. So even if we have this big seeing, to me, it's not so important. I have seen people ask these questions and have a huge explosive seeing, but the very next day, they've forgotten what they saw, and they're right back into the sense of separation again. Because the habit to question hasn't been developed. So even if you had a big experience, we might not be able to keep what we saw anyway, because our thought structure is still moving in the same way of separation. So it may or may not happen that way. Some people will have a big shift, a big seeing, but I'm not so interested in them. I'm more interested in those who want to keep showing up and keep asking the questions. The big seeing, the big shift is, it's a nice experience, but it has a beginning and an ending, just like every experience. But we're shifting into a mode of being here by asking these questions, a mode of questioning, inquiry, where our inquiry becomes more and more loved and continuous. And we tend to only see those awakened beings that end up teaching. We don't see the normal, everyday people that wake up and go about their lives in a very quiet, but ordinary and peaceful way. And those are the ones that perhaps we know well, you know, the ones that had a big moment, the big seeing. But it's very possible, and I've seen it happen many times, for someone to have a big experience, a big aha moment, and it is totally forgotten the next day, totally forgotten. So maybe it's been romanticised, I don't know. But even if you had a real big shift right now, as we're talking, it wouldn't be so important to me. I'm more excited that you showed up for the questions than anything else.
Well, I have a question of my own, only if no one else. I mean, I don't wanna be laying a barrage over here, but...
Is it to do with the self-inquiry, or is it something else?
It has to do with self-inquiry, but it has, I mean, the question actually is that we all tend to indulge, and self-inquiry becomes all the more difficult in a moment of indulgence. So how, I mean, ironically, that is also when it matters the most. In fact, I would like to believe...
I disagree a little bit there. When it matters the most is, are we doing our inquiry on a regular basis? Are we building a good habit? So if I can do my meditation in the morning, or whenever I do that, can I do my inquiry after that? Because for most of us, it's very difficult to do inquiry when there's a lot of emotion going on, or some indulgence, as you said. But more important is that we start to build a habit of a regular time when we do this inquiry. Because then we're building habits that are gonna last throughout this lifetime and beyond. It's not really so important if we can do inquiry right in that moment, when something big is coming up for us. Quite often, we just can't even remember that we're supposed to do it then, if there's a lot of emotion in the system, etc. Does that make sense?
Yes, indeed, Ellen. So it's the practice of inconsistency that ultimately helps, right?
Consistency is your superpower. Everything changes with it, yes, absolutely. Good question.
Thank you, Helen. I take that line on.
Thank you. We'll go to Saima. Quite quiet, could you speak up a little bit, love?
Uh, let me see.
There we go, that's...
I've been following the Dissolving the Evil course and listening to you lately. It's the inquiry and meditation has never tasted better. And I appreciate you so much. But then, I think that goes, yeah, without saying, the challenge I've been having, or I don't know how to, I don't know how to, what the entry point for this challenge, or how to ask. It's an experience I've been having for maybe ten years. My partner, for example, I walk around with my partner. He's Caucasian presenting, and I'm African, and I see often people treating us differently. And I think it's something I've raised with you before. I'm not really sure how to, how to bring that into inquiry. There's a lot of seeing, there's a lot, yeah, there's a lot of trusting, a lot of things that are just, I'm seeing life being some kind of like dream or something like that. It's like a thought happens, and reality reflects that thought, you know? And so there's not, even when it's considered to be a bad experience or whatever, it's kind of like, it's fine, that's what's happening now, and then thought will change, and then it will loosen up. And so there's a lot of detachment that's happened lately, and a lot of enjoyment in watching these things come and go. But when it comes to this, I'm not sure how to, to approach it, or to just, is it one of those things? Or, I don't know, I was wondering if you have any suggestions?
So as your inquiry goes deeper, you begin to see that I'm not, what I thought I was, as we're talking about today. And then, how can you identify with any particular body? What could I say that my nationality is? Can I have any particular place that I was born? There's less and less for me, and you'll experience it yourself, as this inquiry really deepens. I don't even know which body is mine, or they're all, I have to say that all the bodies are mine. Do I really want to hold on to a strong conviction that I'm British in this case here, this particular body? Or even that I'm a woman, or, what am I now, forty-nine apparently? You know, so those things are, you know, circumstances about one particular body where it seems to have been born. And as your inquiry deepens, you'll just find that you're holding on to those less. Which particular body is yours, can you say for certain?
At this particular moment, it feels really solid, true, that this is an experience that this body is having.
How do you know that that is the only body you have? Why are you so sure about that? Why aren't you equally concerned with all of the bodies? Can you see this tendency to single out one body and say, this is the most important human body, it's mine? Can you see that? A tendency to identify as the one experiencing this experience, and not the one judging of, you know, the other body in the experience. And we do it always. If I have an argument with someone, and I feel that I'm right and they're wrong, there's a strong urge to identify as the one that's right, and not the body that's wrong. So we have this tendency to pick out one body in eight billion, and that's just the human forms, and say, this is mine, this is the most important one. But as you're seeing yourself to be formless consciousness that's everywhere, that tendency has to start to disappear, right? I don't know whether I'm the one being judged or judging, or I have to admit that I am both of those bodies.
Does, does it get to a point where, because in the back of my mind is something that says, this experience is happening because of something you're believing. Is there any truth to that?
It is, but not the belief that the mind thinks. Perhaps it's this tendency, even if I see myself to be infinite and omnipresent, I still go back to one body and mind and reference it. Oh, I feel sick today, or I feel ill, or I feel tired. And really, what's happening is, one body is feeling that way. And we're saying, that's me, I. We're saying, we've closed ourselves down from our everywhiness to just one particular body. So what happens if you don't do that? What happens if, next time this occurs, you don't know which body you are in that experience? Any experience is gonna be two bodies or something, right? And one of those is gonna be the one that you want to identify as. But what if you don't do that? Can you see?
There's a sense of freedom there, where it's like, these bodies interacting, and there's no one to own the experience. And but there's also a resistance of nothing changes. But what about that sense of unfairness? Because...
Mind says, the mind says that if I don't keep identifying as this body, this experience is never gonna stop happening, right? But it's the other way around exactly. When I don't know which body is mine, or they're all mine, this experience cannot happen. It's the tendency to single out one, one body only, and say, that's where I am, that one only. The sense of injustice is very seductive, right? You get to feel like a someone who's been wronged in that moment. You get to really feel, and I'm not for a second advocating that racism or anything is right. It's certainly not, and we'd love to see it disappeared from the world. But as you include all bodies in your self-definition, something really has to shift in that. Really has to. Perhaps you can get a sense of it.
I do. I've had glimpses of it, where they say we're in a dinner table, and someone says something what I eventually would have considered snarky or something, and the response comes very, it's not personal, it's just part of what is happening. And there's no sense, yeah, that sense of like, there's no clinging to an identity. There's just things that are flowing, and it's lighter.
And the experience has to change, it has to change, because you're not holding on to a separate self's perspective in that moment. Wonderful. Just playing with that, right?
Yes, I appreciate it.
Thank you, wonderful. Okay, we'll take the hands up now. No more hands up, please. We'll, we want, I don't want to, we'll see how much time it takes. So Sophie, when you're ready, thanks. Hi. Can you hear me?
Yeah.
Yeah, wonderful.
Something different was coming up before when I put my hand up. I just feel like I'm having a moment of seeing things here, like, everything's so detailed.
So I've been listening to your lesson from last night, which is so beautiful. And I shared on the statement group this morning, and it was really powerful, and it's amazing sharing, because it brings an element of seeing things out. And I just, I feel I know this, but it's like, so much attention was placed on these sensations and emotion. And then this morning, I've been in a lot of inquiry, and it's like, that's all irrelevant, right? That's all just phenomena, the sensations, the emotions, the feelings, the thoughts. It's all just phenomena, none of it really is. It's all just potential apparent distractions and problems. Like, none of it needs my attention unless it's an urgent, you know, like, there's no rules, are there, for it to not need my attention? But it's just like, I feel like I'm in this place where I know it, but it's just this moment of, oh my gosh.
Yeah, but phenomena are beautiful. We just wanna make sure we're interacting with them as who we really are. Otherwise, they become overwhelming, and my problems and my things, you know, my emotions, my thoughts, all of that. And it becomes eventually too painful to do that. So we begin to see who we really are. And from there, there's just a sense, the whole universe is just going on, right? It's just going on. It doesn't need me to manage it or interact with it. Same with thoughts and emotions, and it's just happening, and it's different experience then. It's just, it's just what is, right? There's no need to manage anything.
No. It doesn't even feel important right now. It just feels like it's so beautiful that this morning has just been this inquiry, and then we're here now in this lesson with you. And it's like, I look around the room, and I hear your question of are there forms? And it's like, no, they're not, but it's all just so incredible, like, this is, what is this? It's just like, it's amazing.
I'm right there with you, still amazed by what all this is, you looking like this, right? And it becomes, instead of thoughts being problematic or emotions being terrible, it's just stunningly beautiful after a while. How do you manage to look like all of this?
Yeah.
And it's quite overwhelming in a very good way. Like, I never realised how much beauty was actually here, right in front of me, everywhere I look.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you for sharing. Wonderful. Okay, we'll go to Pauline.
Hello, Helen.
Hi.
I was a little curious about the order of the questions. And that, is there a separate sense of self as the first? It always seemed to me, generally, listening to different seminars and questions, when you help people, people often find it easier to find what, what am I, before they realise that it's not, they're not seeing that as a separate self. I was just interested, have I missed something somewhere? I find it more difficult. I mean, I find it easier, put it this way, to find no separate self after I have found the, what I actually am, the awareness. And then I look for the separate self, and I can't find it.
For me, I got very good at recognising consciousness in my meditation awareness, whatever you wanna call it, really good. I could hear the silence even in the busiest of airports, you know, that which is real. In the supermarket, you know, Christmas Eve, in the middle of the supermarket, when it's chaos. But unknowingly inside, there was still this idea that I was recognising it from my body and mind. I was using some part of the body and mind to recognise the consciousness. And so this question, is there really a separate person, became fundamental. Because, and that's why it's first, because if I don't challenge this, I can go on forever subtly believing I'm someone recognising this. Not, it's not happening here. I'm not like, oh, I think I'm a person recognising consciousness. But I was having the opposite experience of not being able to recognise it sometimes, you know, up until I started to check. So if I'm not questioning this, I'm sustaining it, there's nothing in between. I'm either questioning if there's a person, or I'm believing there is. There's no middle ground there. I'm either questioning or sustaining the sense of separation. When I realised that, I began to ask this question first, really. It became the most important question, actually, because when the sense of separation is being challenged, am I really a person? Can I find one? Consciousness quite often just presents itself. It becomes more apparent, that which is real, which is here. And so perhaps the most important of all the questions is the first one. And my mind wanted to drop it again and again. You've seen there's no person, why are you keep looking? Why are you keep looking? There's no need to. But if I remembered last time, I didn't find a person when I looked, I'm actually being a someone that's remembering. So only sustained looking and not finding a person was actually effective to really finally break through. As paradoxical as it seems, right? You think you look once, it would be enough. But it's actually the most important part of it, to look and not find a person.
It's certainly very strongly established. And I had to work hard to establish that sense of self in the beginning.
You all did, yeah. Worked very hard to fortify this person, and that's another reason for asking the question again and again. Because there's such an investment in that person, especially right now, right? The person who really wants to wake up, really wants awakening. Perhaps we're believing in the person now more than ever, the one who has to get there.
Yeah.
Or the one has to surrender to the great self, or whatever. You know, there's a thousand tiny ways, subtle ways, to sustain a sense of a person. So with this question being number one for me, it was making sure that I'm not doing that, right? Let me start from the most important thing.
Okay. But you do say quite often, and I mean, I'm not suggesting it's the same thing, but that there is still for you a sense of, a sense of self. I mean, so when I'm eating, or I wake up from a great night's sleep, or whatever, I am enjoying the physical sensations of that. And there is a sense of, my life is very nice, just at this moment, etc. There's a, there is a sense of my life is very nice, just this moment, et cetera. And I have sometimes. Actually, quite often, under, you know, realize that I can experience. This sort of thing. Um, it happening also in someone else's, someone else's, you know, in another apparent body. But, um. What, what you were talking to Saima and I was thinking about that is. What, so from where you are now, from the infinite self, can the infinite self? Enjoy, um. The physical experiences of more than oneself.
More.
More than one, more, more than one body, sorry.
It's enjoying every bodily experience, all the bodies and me. And in each particular body mind, I'm enjoying that experience. I'm enjoying answering, enjoying asking. We don't need to have that experience here. It would be too much.
Right. Yeah, yes.
If I could somehow have eight billion experiences all at once, I mean, that would just be. Catastrophic, can you imagine? It, it sometimes does happen, as you say, as the energetic awakening, uh. Happens and increases. You, you can have a knowing of what someone else is thinking or all of that stuff can start to happen, but. All of that is very, um, you know, we're not so interested. I'm not so interested. I'm having so much fun being Helen finally.
Yeah, right.
Uh, it's like.
And that's okay.
Yeah, that's more than enough. It's like.
That's lovely.
Stunningly epic, like this, um. Horror story and tragedy movie that I was watching that was my life, that suddenly turned into this. Uh, love affair and comedy, you know, there's just, it gets better every scene, you know, and. So. There's such a richness and fullness of being at home in your human beingness finally.
Okay.
And that gets more delicious every day.
Right. And that is very different from having a sense of a separate self, that it's just.
It still feels like, right now, it seems like there's someone here talking to someone else, right? But it's comical and it's amusing and it's funny and it's even useful. You know, where am I gonna get my sister for Christmas this year? I've got no idea. Every year I have this. You know, but it's hilarious now. It's like, well, the body will go buy something at some point. And it did, you know, but without all the stress and the drama, you know, so it's, it's okay.
You just said it. I was thinking earlier, I wonder if Helen has this problem about what is she going to buy for such and such.
Well, the body writes a list of all the people I need to buy for and then I just sit there. Until an idea pops up, but there's zero effort. I don't, I don't literally just sit there. It's like, okay. At some point, some decision will arise and something will happen. You know. Christmas shopping has never been easier. Yeah.
That's so lovely. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Wonderful. Uh, Guilene?
Hi Helen.
Hi love.
So my question is indirectly related to self inquiry. So, you know, for the past ten months or so, I haven't been very active in, in the Sangha. My life has been. Kind of crazy. Um. But my, so there was a period where I wasn't able to do any spiritual practice at all, but right now I'm, I'm, I'm. Kind of doing self, self, sorry?
Is that true? You're never able to do, there's a time when you're not able to do any practice at all?
Well, it, there was a period, you know, when the Atariya program started where I felt like I wasn't able to.
It seemed like it. That's, that's all I wanna point out. Please go ahead.
So, um, but now it seems like it's happening, um. Um. Kind of throughout the day, not, I wouldn't say non-stop, but it, you know, it's kind of like a, almost ongoing in a background, almost always self inquiry. Um, and there's a lot of peace and, you know, um, but there are moments where, um. Where there's, there's, um. Like, uh, you know, the, 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 the mind is coming back or, or the attention goes back to the mind very strongly and then. You know, there's suffering and all of that. And then it seems like I forget everything and I try to do self inquiry and it. It, it either doesn't work or it only lasts for like a fraction of a second when I ask the question that, you know, there, there's like a, a relief. For a few seconds, but then everything just comes back. So right now, I'm in, I'm in this period for the last few days where there's a lot of suffering and. It seems like not, nothing works, you know, to feel better.
Find a person who's suffering?
No, and that's the thing. I look and there's nobody there and then for one second or something, it's, it seems like, I, okay, I'm, oh. There's like an instant of like, okay, I'm better, but then bang.
Question two then, question two then, what do you find? If there's no person, what are you?
Yeah, I just find, um, spaciousness and awareness.
And can that suffer?
Um. Not directly.
Not directly?
Yeah, that's, that's, uh, that's what. Meaning that, that, the experience I'm having is, is very powerful and very unpleasant. Um, so there's a strong pushing against and a strong wanting for it to, to stop. And, and there's a, there's a seems to be that I'm this person and there's a lot of fear and. I just intellectually, I know it's not true and I want it to stop and then I do the self inquiry and then. For one second, there's relief, but then it just, it just seems like I can't get out of, of this until I get out of it eventually. I, I always.
So a non-existent person is having a non-existent suffering experience that lasts for a non-existent amount of time.
Yes.
Stops at some random point is what you're telling me.
That's, that's correct, yes.
And I'm not making fun, I know it.
No, no, absolutely.
Really real. I'm just trying to, to say it from, from what's.
Yeah, yeah. No, 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 it's, it's, that's exactly what's happening.
Inquiry has to be more than a painkiller, right? Has to be, um, a habit that we do every day at a set time. Because then when we do that, we're stating that it's the most important thing. It only needs to be five or 10 minutes a day of asking these questions. You can do it later in the day also, but. There has to be a habit that's built first. Our habits define us completely in manifestation, so. If I use inquiry only when I seem to be suffering, then I'm using it as a painkiller. I take a pill, I feel better. I forget about it for a while and then it comes right back later. But to really pull the roots out. Can we settle into a habit and a routine of inquiry?
Yeah, it's true that it seems to, I, I, I do it. A lot during the day, but I think you, you, you're putting your finger on something there. It's, it's probably unconsciously. The, the habit is to do it when there's suffering or when there's discomfort.
Been there, I've been right there. That's when I realize it's the habits, right? If I'm putting my inquiry first, I'm gonna do this. Every day still, I do my meditation just because it feels so good, do my inquiry because it feels so good. And I do a little conscious imagining before I go about the rest of my day. That's always first, always first for me because. I'm in that.
You feel good.
Especially when I feel good. Why would you want to stop doing something that feels really good? Right? Why would you want to stop that?
Yeah.
And it's really just the, the consciousness, uh, not just wanting to feel better, but really wanting to deeply recognize itself. So it's all over, finished and done, right? And, and it's normal. We all come to it. We use it like a pain pill. While, and we stop as soon as we feel better. But after a while of doing that, I realized it, it, it only ends up right back at the same place. A minute, an hour, a day later.
Yeah.
Sometimes even a month, I'd have this glorious month and then right back there again, because I hadn't pulled the roots out of the separate person. It just grew back again.
Yeah, I think that's what's happening. I'm realizing that I, I have a tendency to. Do the spiritual practice more when I don't feel good and then I feel good, so I kinda let, let go a little bit and then I'm just enjoying. How I'm feeling good for a while, maybe hours or days or weeks and then bang, you know, the suffering comes back and then, oh, so I go back to the practice. Yeah.
Wonderful.
And just, just, uh. It's not related, but it's kind of related. So. What, why is it that, like this morning I was feeling horrible and then I remember there was this session, so I logged in and, and automatically as soon as I was in, I was feeling better. So what is that? This, this, it's like there's this, this thing where.
You've put your spiritual growth first. That's why I was pointing at the start. It seems like I don't have time. My life's so crazy, I don't have time to do spiritual practice. Actually, it's the other way around, because I've dropped my practice, my life is reflecting that craziness that's going on in here. And it's upside down completely, right? So this is why the habits, we're talking about doing this every day. And the mind says, oh my god, you know, but you can't afford not to do it every day, right? You've seen what happens when you don't do it. Consistency is the superpower. We all have the. Ability to become more and more consistent, starting from wherever we're at. And it was only then for me that things really began to change.
So it's not depressed because I felt like, oh, I'm in the presence of Helen and, and others, so I feel better, but that's not it.
It, it helps in the way that we realize I'm not the only one suffering here or, you know, falling back into illusion. Because while we're on our own, so to speak, and we're not connecting with the Sangha. We're sustaining this idea that I'm on my own and I'm getting this wrong, something like that, right? I'm screwing it up. When we connect, we see we're all having the same challenges. The one self is waking up to itself in all of these bodies. And in each one, it gets tripped up a little, it forgets to practice one day, it forgets the question, whatever. That tripping up is that falling. And we begin to, to realize, uh, there's a strength here, right? And consciousness learns a lot faster when it plugs into the Sangha, because it can learn through everyone's questions. Everyone's challenges. Otherwise, you've got no option but to just experience them in a very slow and learned, but very slow linear way.
Right.
And it's very painful.
Okay.
Because you can't even see. What the idea is. That, um, i- is holding things back. And the idea is. Um, I need to, I'm doing this on my own or I don't have time to practice. It's all coming from a separate self talking, right? I had four kids. And I was cleaning houses every day and I had to make time. And I got up, uh, I got up at like four thirty in the morning just to make sure I had time because. I knew what happened if I didn't. And somehow that just kinda all turned around my life, the rest of my life. Began to flow the way I wanted it to, but it didn't happen until it was consistent practice.
Okay. Yeah, okay. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Uh, so we go to Henrik's, uh, last but not least, before we finish. Sorry, Justin, we don't have time for any more. Wonderful, thank you. Please go then. Hi.
Hi. Um, mine is similar to the previous one. I've spent probably an hour every day, sometimes more since September, since I found your teachings, um. Listening to, to your talks, um, doing some inquiry and meditating for maybe twenty minutes. Um, but I find, it's interesting, I do notes and when I look at the notes, I find that. Every second week or every third week, I have this amazing epiphanies and things seem to go really well. And then I, uh. Go back into really. Deep. Depression and. Uh, hopelessness again. So it seems like. It seems like, I don't know if I can even say I'm making any progress, um.
You're not making any progress. Nobody is.
No.
That's the thing we identify with, right? I'm, we feel like I'm getting there, I'm getting towards awakening. Do you remember I was saying this position here? I'm moving towards awakening. And when we identify as this, we're elated, we're, we're lifted up when we have the ah, epiphany. And then we're brought down again when we feel that we're not getting anywhere.
Yeah.
Consciousness itself is making no progress towards anything. It's just seeing who it already is. Right? When you check in, see what you really are in your inquiry and your meditation. What you really are is not moving towards anything or away from anything, right? It's just here. You're just seeing this is who you always have been. There has to be. A disidentification that begins to happen with, um, you're not lifted up by the aha moments and you're not depressed by the. Not so good moments.
Yeah. I think I'm. I'm very, very, very frustrated, frustrated because I've had so many challenges, um. Apparently that happens to a lot of people, um.
Only everyone.
Well, I, I mean, most of my friends haven't had, um, we shouldn't compare, but. I'm, I'm very frustrated because I thought I had a very nice, uh, life, things worked out really well and then. Yeah, it just one thing after another and it's difficult to see the positive side with this, apparently. Life is, I don't know, it's trying to show you something else, but I just get really angry and frustrated. It's, uh, it's difficult to, um. Um. I don't know, maybe it's made me even more self-centered, um, is there a cure for that?
Self-inquiry. Just to, just to see. You, you say that this has made you more frustrated or angry.
Yeah.
But the anger is showing you there's a belief that hasn't been questioned. The anger is a symptom. Of a belief in a separate being. Right? Somebody who wants to achieve something. And all we're really doing is moving to see that we have always been this person, uh, this infinite self.
Yeah, so the, the sound disappeared. Could you take the, the, the last sentence again?
Yeah, we're just coming to see that we've always been the infinite self. Anger, frustration is a feeling that we're being blocked from getting to where we need to be.
Yeah.
Some sense of freedom that the mind says is in the future, right? But the inquiry is showing us the freedom that is here now in this moment. Who we really are is already free. And inquiry will keep showing us that.
But, are, I know you people say that there's, there are no mistakes in life. Could, could there be some mistakes here that I, I mean. Could it be that my life went wrong or that? This is not how it's supposed to be. I mean, it's.
Every person who has woken up to truth completely. Has had some kind of disaster in their life. Their life, my life fell apart completely. After I'd begun to see who I was, my life fell apart in the outer circumstances. Because it was showing me these ideas that I was still hold, I was seeing who I really was, consciousness, presence. But I was also holding on to these old ideas. That there's an inner and outer world, that I'm a separate being who's feeling this way, all of those things.
Hmm.
So nobody gets away without this. Life has to squeeze us until we're willing to question even these deep beliefs. We have to see who we are through inquiry. And then we have to be willing to see who we're not. I'm not this separate person who's having these problems, right? When you say my life.
Hmm.
Who are you talking about?
This, yeah, obviously talking about the, the body mind.
Mm-hmm. So just, just to notice that, right? This is where I'm really holding on to a sense of separation still.
Hmm.
Because it seems important to do so. If I don't hold on to the sense of a separate self that needs to fix my life, it won't fix itself.
Yeah, yeah.
The other way around, right? If I'm willing to let go of all. If I'm willing to let go of all the places I'm thinking like a separate being, life will can then reflect that back to me. And you can feel it, right? You can feel when the I is or the me is a separate self, because the body says, oh, I don't like that.
Yeah, yeah. It, the frustrating thing is that it comes over me, it just takes over me and I get really angry and furious and frustrated and smash things and things.
Here's, here's this opportunity now with what you've said.
Mm-hmm.
Does it come over you, consciousness? Does it come upon you, the infinite self, the formlessness? Can it, an emotion, a state, can it overpower you, the infinite consciousness? It's experienced like that until we question, it feels like this is, anger used to like I used to fly into a rage, believe it or not, I was so angry all the time. Especially when my life turned upside down, I was like, this, this anger takes over me and I was just, you know, seeing this red mist, but I had to question that, can something take over me? That's an old idea from my old sense of self, it doesn't apply to me anymore as the infinite self. What can overpower you, that from which the cosmos is arising? These things have to be looked at and questioned, right? Even just to ask, is this a problem of the real self or of my imaginary separate self? And I know that it feels real in that moment, I totally get that, I've been right there. It's only when I was willing to question it. Can anything affect me from the outside in, an emotion, a person, anything? If I am this formless consciousness? And it's only when I stood my ground there, that the experience began to change. Because we see who we are, see who we are, see who we are, but then go right back to this old thought process.
Yeah, that's what
Yeah.
That's what happens, because I've been questioning, uh, I, I, I know what you say when you say can can it really affect the infinite, um, self and, and it can't, um. I, I kind of know that, but, and I, I, I have epiphanies and I see it clearly, but then I fall right back into identification and separate self and furious and angry, and then I get despondent, I feel this is, isn't it working? Am I gonna go on questioning? Sometimes it's tiring, questioning and inquiring, you know?
So, there'll be a point when you don't want to say to me what you just said. I get despondent, I go right back into it.
Mm-hmm.
Something inside will go, no, even if this experience keeps happening, I'm not gonna agree with it inside, I'm not gonna validate this experience inside.
Hmm.
And when, even when the anger was surging through the body for me, it was like, there was this point, something said, no, I'm not I know what happens if I pick this up.
Yeah.
Gonna let it burn and let it rage inside and it dissipated in less than thirty seconds. Because I was no longer fueling it, right?
Yeah.
You're not making progress, you're also not going backwards, none of us are. There's nowhere to get to, there's only the seeing of where you already are and have always been. That's the only important thing to do is to keep seeing that I'm already free. And then to recognise what that means, right? Nothing can overwhelm me as consciousness.
Hmm.
And to sort through your experiences that happen, is this true for who I really am? Is this true for the consciousness itself?
No, I don't know, it's not, um. So, what would you say? Because I feel like, uh, a bit like a fake, you know, when I when I I, I have this seeing and, and then right back again, I was thinking, was I just pretending or was it just, um am I failing this or?
When, when mind suggests these things to you, you have a seeing and then mind suggests to you, you you're pretending or you're imagining or you're making it up what you just saw.
Hmm.
Why accept that? Why pick it up? You know you saw something, right?
Mm-hmm, yeah.
You stand by that instead.
Hmm.
Mind says, oh, you're making it up, it's not real, look, see, you've lost it, you go, no, I'm not playing with you today, I'm staying here. Mind can say whatever it likes, it's always up to us whether we pick it up or not and make it ours.
Hmm.
Your body's always telling you if you're doing that or not, because it either feels good or bad, there's only two states we really experience.
Yeah.
One is where we're playing with mind, one is where we're being ourself. It gets really very simple at the end like this, right? When mind says, you're doing a great job, you had a great seeing there, you go, I'm not playing with that either, I'm just gonna stay here. Mind says, you screwed it up again, it's gone, you lost it, you're making it up, I'm not playing with that either. Not picking up either one of those, I'm gonna stay in my equanimity. You have this already, the power inside to do what I'm saying right now. It's only when we're so disenchanted with this, uh, rollercoaster ride of being a separate being.
Hmm.
That we step out of it, and that's where you're at right now, right?
Yeah.
I lived there for three or four years and it was awful.
Yeah, it's quite awful actually.
But it pushed me to reach for peace and equanimity rather than this high, which had to follow with a low.
Yeah.
Equanimity and peace is everything, everything. There's a special mantra, right, that anyone can use when the mind starts talking. And you just say, not today, thanks. Not today, you're not pushing away, just like, not today. If someone knocked on your door, you go, no, not today, thank you.
Alright.
It works, try it.
I'm going to try that definitely.
Thank you.
Thank, thank you.
Wonderful, so we will, uh, wrap this up, just to, um, bring this to a close. We are adding a habit in our inquiry to, um, uh, as part of our daily practice, to ask these questions. And just doing the best you can, the willingness to ask the questions every day, at least once a day. And, uh, five or 10 minutes just sitting, asking these questions, can I find a separate person? What do I find then when I look for myself? And how am I recognising the consciousness? Am I using my mind, my senses? How am I seeing it? And letting go of needing to find the answers, letting the questions do the heavy lifting for us. And as we ask like this, each day, we're actually stating, um, that this is the most important thing. We find out what we value most by what our habits are, right? For me, the consistency and the habit is, um, just start from wherever you're at. If you can only do this once this week, celebrate that you achieved it once. And then you're much more likely to do it twice, two days next week and so on. Before you know it, you'll be using self inquiry consistently. So, thank you for showing up and being here and, uh, sharing your challenges and your insights with all of us today. The one being that we all are learns so much faster when we all contribute together like this, all of the bodies together, so thank you, thank you, and amazay.